Ring the bell. Welcome, everybody, to the Rotary Club in Erdonia Hills. My name is Steve Bajinski. I'm this year's president. Thanks for joining us. John, could you give us the invocation, please?
Sure, let's be in a humble spirit of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this gorgeous day in Ohio. Thank you for the opportunity that we have to express our selections in this election today. Keep us, keep us safe. We thank you, God, for the technology we're able to experience in these times and how it's able to make us connect with each other. Be with us, bless the food that we are about to eat. Give us the strength to follow your will. We ask these things in your holy name, dear God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. If everybody could join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
The republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Rotary guests, today we have Andrea Tinia Ba. Is it Tinia now? Is that how you pronounce your name?
No, it's Tiniano.
Tiniano.
It sounds Italian, but it's not.
Okay, well, welcome, Andrea. Thanks for coming to speak to our club. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve.
Is there anybody else hiding besides the little ones that I've seen show up every now and then? Joe, do you have your little pumpkin bug with you today?
I had him with me, but I took him home and he ran across and he did his business on the neighbor's lawn, so I'm happy about that.
We donated a costume to Joe's bulldog on Halloween and he was a pumpkin fur day. Everybody loved it. He looked great.
Everybody loved him. And he shaped like a pumpkin, so it was perfect.
It was perfect. Oh, there's Nick's dog. Did you dress him up for Halloween? No. See, so we did have some Rotary guests here. Thanks, everybody. Today in history, I don't see Casey here, so I did a little bit of research to give us a little bit of history today. September 11th, everyone knows what happened then. It was a very dire day when we had some terrorist attacks on the US. Well, one night on November 3rd, 2014, One World Trade Center officially opens in New York City on the site of where the Twin Towers went down. So that was a quite an accomplishment. Built a nice memorial to everyone that perished that day. The Soviet Union launched Sputnik II, which carried the first living creature into space on this day back in 1957. A dog like Laika was launched into space on this day. Unfortunately, the dog perished after it ran out of life support, but they sent like a dozen other dogs up there before the first cosmonaut Yuri Karagun became the first human to travel into space, April 12th and 61. I believe that's all I have in history today. Oh, I do have one other thing. Looks like it didn't print it. Oh, here it is. Very sad day in sports today. Back in 2016, I'm sure everyone remembers, we thought the Indians were gonna win the World Series. They were up three to one. Well, they actually lost to the Chicago Cubs. It actually went in, it started on November 2nd, but there was a rain delay. It ended on November 3rd, but they lost the seventh game of the World Series that day. So sad day for our sports fans. That's all I have in history. We do have some birthdays. We already talked about Paul Jackson. He's celebrating his, he celebrated his birthday on November 1st. Happy birthday, Paul.
Thank you.
A young 94, is that what you said?
Exactly.
Well, congratulations. Happy birthday, Paul. I'll also share their birthday with Tim Bayless. Tim isn't with us today, but happy birthday to Tim. His birthday is also on November 1st with Paul. So happy birthday to Tim. Happy birthday, Tim. Are there any birthdays I may have missed? Okay, we do have a couple Rotary anniversaries. Carl Loriani, Carl, you joined Rotary 34 years ago, November 1st in 1986. Congratulations, Carl.
Seems like only a lifetime.
Also, Dr. Woodruff joined Rotary 41 years ago on November 1st. So congratulations to Dr. Woodruff. That's all I have in history. Humor of the day, Dr. Cockle, can you give us a joke?
Doesn't appear he can.
Oh, nope. Dr. Cockle's not here. So anyone got a joke for us?
I have the cheesiest joke in the world. You ready?
We're ready.
What the big flower say to the little flower? Hey bud. Hey bud. I told you it was cheesy.
I have one.
Let's hear it.
Go ahead, Julie.
This is kind of goes with our theme that we were talking about earlier. What do chickens grow on? Eggplants.
Oh, boy, the jokes are getting cheesier.
I can shell out some more.
I think we'll just go to happy and sad dollars. Does anybody have any happy or sad dollars?
Well, here's a happy. I don't know if you can see that.
Kind of, it's a little blurry.
Okay, it says a baby can drink a bottle and fall asleep and people say it's cute, but as soon as I do, I'm an alcoholic.
Dollar for our volleyball team, district champs. They are going on the regionals this Thursday against Jackson. Jackson's the only team that's beat them this year. First game of the year, so big game.
Can you see the picture? Can't see my picture.
When do they play, Joe?
They play Thursday, 7:30 at Hudson against Jackson. Wow. And I'm not, are you guys airing it, Julie, or is anybody cable nine or community?
I don't know. I don't know who's airing it, but they're on the front of my paper. That was my head. Can't really see it, though.
Yeah, as soon as you hold it up, your head disappears.
It disappears magically.
Well, good luck to them.
Yeah, fun team, fun team to watch.
Absolutely. Any other? Well, I can give, definitely give a happy dollar to Paul Jackson and his happy birthday. 94 years. Great accomplishment. Anybody else? All right, with that being said, let's move on to our featured speaker. Today we have Andrea Tiniano. Tinianow?
Yeah, yeah, that was pretty close. Thank you.
I'm happy to introduce Andrea, who is zooming in live from Wilmington, Delaware. Is that correct, Andrea?
Yeah, that's right. Thanks so much, Steve.
You're welcome. Andrea is the connector-in-chief at Connector Street, Connector Street. She created the Connector Street app to modernize the art of making introductions. Connector Street enables users to introduce two people quickly, easily, and securely. Andrea is a Delaware attorney whose career has straddled both business and law. Her most recent full-time position were with a global corporate service company where she served as VP Business Development and Assistant General Counsel, and then with the state of Delaware where she led an economic development team for the Secretary of State. Now Andrea is pursuing her dream to be an entrepreneur with a successful social networking app. Andrea, welcome. Floor is yours.
Oh, thanks so much, Steve. Thank you. And I want to thank everybody for having me. You know, I'd love to, can we unmute everybody? Because I'm gonna talk, but I really love to make my talks more of a conversation, so I want people to feel free to respond. You know, if they, if they so inclined, they're so inclined, just so I can hear what people have to say. Before I get started, I do want to call out some people, that's some friendly faces in the crowd. First, I want to call out Laura, because without Laura, I would not be here today. She is the mass, I may be the connector-in-chief, but she's gotta be the master in connections. So yeah, absolutely. What a delightful person. I, I was doing some outreach over LinkedIn to talk to chamber leaders to do market research for the app, and Laura got back to me and we had a series of really lovely conversations and she invited me to her women's group, to her referral group, and it was during the women's group that I think it was Debbie, one of your colleagues, your members, Debbie Zeitlow, right, had suggested that I talk to Jacob. Where's Jacob? Are you, are you here, Jacob? Still here? There you are. You're waving. And, and she said, she said I should talk to Jacob, and then Jacob and I had some really great conversations and and, and so that led to, that led to my being invited to speak, but before I move on, I also have to do a big shout out to someone I've really gotten to know very well, well, pretty well in the last few weeks, and that's Julie D. And I see she's someone you all, that you all know her pretty well. And what's very exciting for me is that I was at Laura's group and really talking a little bit about what I'm doing with Connector Street, but I, I, I'm very, I'm very transparent. This is me, you know, I was just saying what I like to do, and I said, I really don't have certain skills and I'm, I don't know enough about social media, and Julie piped up and said, I can help you with that. And by golly, she really, she sure can, and she has been. So we've been working together really since that day, maybe three weeks ago, and in such a short period of time, she's helped me launch a newsletter. She's connected my social media and just, it's been just like everything I could have hoped for. So I'm really just, and what, the other thing which really brings, makes me happy is that I see you're all part of this community and it's such a tight-knit community. It just seems so lovely. And, and so I just, so I'm so happy to be here. So I just wanted to give that little bit of background. And what's interesting to me is I'm looking at all of you and, and speaking to all of you, I see some of you are in your homes or your home offices. Some of you, I can't really tell because I suspect you're not. I think, I think, who is this? Howard's backdrop is in front of the Golden Gate Bridge. It looks like. I don't think you're quite there, so I can't tell if you're in your home office or?
All right, I'll change it.
No, no, no. What I meant to say is like, we're all, we're all in places and we're all in this very strange situation because of the pandemic. You know, we're all in this, this grid, this, this virtual technological grid where we interact with each other and it's kind of nice. I mean, I've got warm feelings from you. Hopefully you've warmed feelings from each other. And yet, you know, interacting like this, something, I think, something's missing when we're not actually going someplace and opening a door and going into an office building or a conference center. Let me ask you, have any of you been to a conference in the last six months?
No.
No. A business meeting where you're with several people or people you don't know?
No.
No, nobody. Yeah, the one thing I, I miss, and when I was thinking about what I would talk, Jacob and I were talking a little bit about what, what should I talk about? And I, I said, well, I'll tell you, I, I miss bumping into people. I, I, I like to meet new people and I talk to people all the time. I'm sure most of you do too. And what I miss, quite miss a lot, is showing up at a meeting and I can tell you, I remember before COVID, I remember walking to a conference. I was actually gonna be a speaker. I saw a woman sitting in the lobby all by herself, and she looked like somebody who was gonna be going to the conference. I'd gotten there early. And so I walked over to her and I said, oh, are you here for the conference? And she said, yes, I'm very early. I said, well, you know, I'm a speaker. I'm gonna be speaking at this conference. Would you like to, you know, walk upstairs with me? We started talking. Wouldn't you know, she was actually gone to the same college I went to. She was in my class. It was like crazy. We, we stayed in touch. I mean, it's one of those strange things. You bump into people. When you bump, it's like the, the world sort of throws something wonderful at you. I mean, not every time it's wonderful, but often you meet cool people and maybe you don't do anything with them, but for that moment, you get that wonderful, warm feeling. So, um, so I was thinking about that and then there were sort of a couple of events that, that, that I, that sort of, I guess I would say happened to me that I want to share with you. So the first thing, the first thing was that, was that I was, I was cleaning out my contacts because Julie and I were creating a newsletter and I had to come up with the mailing list. And I had like, I kid you not, probably 2,000 contacts. I had never cleaned them out. I had to go through them and I figured out how to download them off my phone. They were in a spreadsheet and I'm like, I don't know this person. I don't, I'm, I'm just one by one, just going through each. And then I came across this, the name of somebody, a, a young man I had met. Actually, I had met him when I was working for the state of Delaware. And I was doing economic development and he was a young guy, super smart. We, we kind of stayed in touch. And I was thinking, I had in his name, he's from Italy, actually, so very sort of very global and international. And I, I saw his name and I was just like, I wonder what he's doing. You know, I wonder what he's doing. And so I, I, I sent him just a little text, hey, Armonio, I, I just was thinking about you. Are you still in Asia? Like, what's going on? And I'll tell you, within a few minutes, I got this message and it's, it's kind of funny because this is someone really I probably hadn't spoken to in two years. And he sent me this text. I'm just gonna read it to you. I swear to God, I just thought about you and mentioned you in a conversation I was having with a friend of mine a couple of days ago. Then it's like an emoji with like water coming out of his eyes. I'm about to fall asleep and stuck in Vietnam. How are you? Can we have a call soon? Upside down smiley face, like hysterical. And you know, it's one of those things, it just, it just made me happy. You know, and then we ended up actually having a great, you know, WhatsApp call and then he sent me information and he's looking at my app and we just got that, that connection going. And then, and then another time, a few days later, I don't know about you, but my husband is, he likes things kept orderly. He's a little, you know, he likes things neat. He likes things in order and that's just the opposite of what I am. So when he saw my, my, not my contacts, but he saw that I had, you know, thousands of pictures on my phone, he felt that he had to just start cleaning them out. Seriously. And I'm fine with that. Listen, we get along. It's great. He wants to bring order into my chaotic life. I let that happen. So he's flipping through, cleaning out, you know, and actually because of the app, I take a lot of pictures of people because I want to show them how they look on the app. And I'll talk about that later, but I have a lot of pictures of a lot of people, a lot of friends. And he's flipping through pictures and screenshots and just deleting it. Then he shows me this picture and it's, it's a, it's a nice picture of a, of a good-looking guy. I mean, it's a great picture. It's like, who's that? Who's that guy? And I said, oh, that's my friend John. He's a lawyer in town. He's got a, he's, he's got a registered agent business. And I'm like, you're right. That's a great picture. I'm like, don't delete it, because he's deleting all the, like, don't delete it. Let me send it to him. I, he's got, he's gonna want to see that picture. I mean, if someone had a really nice picture of me, I'd be thrilled if someone sends it to me. So I sent him the picture and he, you know, gives me a little heart back, like, thanks so much. How are you? This is great. But then what I did was I said, like, you want to meet up? Want to get together? You want to get a coffee, a socially distant coffee? And he was like, yeah, absolutely. And actually, when I, I finish here, I'm meeting him to sit outside and drink a cup of coffee. I probably haven't seen him in more than a year. And it's one of those things like, now here's the thing, like, yeah, I sent him, I sent him the picture and he got back to me, but I had to say to him, let's get coffee. Let's do this. And this, this happens a lot, you know, where someone, you know, someone reaches out or you reach out and then it goes nowhere. But then you could take that little extra step and say, let's catch up or what's going on or whatever it is. And so what you're doing is I, I call it creating your own chance encounters. Right? You're creating that spontaneity that, that we don't have these days because we can't bump into people, you know, in the coat check. I'll tell you, I, I, I'll give you my coat check story, my coat check story. I was at a conference maybe a year and a half ago in New York City. Lot of people waiting to get their coat. And I just start talking to the guy next to me. I don't know what it was. And, and he said something like, oh, what are you doing? What are you spending your time on or something? And I said, oh, I've created this app. It's called Connector Street. It's, it's for bringing connections. He's like, what? Tell me more. I start telling him. He's like, I created an app just like that. And he said, and he said, and here's who funded it, and it was gonna do all these things. It was gonna be for conferences. I never got it off the ground. And I thought, oh my God, that's unbelievable. Like to meet someone in a, wanting a coat check that is trying to do the same thing. He told me how much money he spent. He told me where they had their problems. He said, I could have the code if I wanted it, but I didn't want his code. But you just never know. Like you just never know. And, and here's the thing, you might meet people and they may be people you're gonna do business with or not, but mostly I think right now, these kind of fun, unexpected connections, they're just fun. They're just things I think we all, we all need. And I've been actually, even after writing this article, as I've realized it, I've been way more aggressive in, in scheduling these, these connections, making these connections happen. The other day, yesterday, I, I saw someone, someone I didn't know very well. He posted an article on LinkedIn. And I was like, wow, I wonder what's going on with this guy. And I looked at my, I looked in my messages that I'd messaged him and he was in Hong Kong. And I said, are you still in Hong Kong? Nope, back in California. What are you doing? Oh, a little consulting. Me too. You want to compare notes? Yeah, now we got a call scheduled. Like people that I wouldn't necessarily have thought about reaching out to or, or thought about, oh, I want to take that next step. But I gotta tell you, I, I need it. And I think it's fun to, to make those connections. So I'm gonna give you one more example and then I'm gonna pivot for a minute. Just like I was invited by Laura so generously to join the chamber meetings, I got invited last week to join the Arizona Hispanic Chamber meeting, and it was a meeting of ambassadors. And she didn't even really, she didn't really tell me what it was about. It was one of those things where the invitation just showed up and I thought, you know what? Kismet, I'm just gonna go. I didn't ask her what it was about. I didn't ask her if she wanted me to speak. I didn't, I just said, you know what, somebody, I said, thanks for the invitation. I'll be there. And so I showed up, Zoom call, zoomed in. I mean, for me, one of the nice things about, I mean, nothing's nice about the pandemic. But one of the benefits really is that I get to meet a lot of people around the country. I get invited to meetings just like this. I meet the loveliest people. The loveliest people. And, and so I, I, I went to this meeting and there was a financial planner who spoke for about 30 minutes, Jacob, if I thought of you. And it was interesting. And then after that, it was one of those things where I didn't quite get what's going on. They're like, now we're doing the matchmaking. Like, that's interesting. And they started matching people up. And I got matched to three people and I'm thinking, oh, they're gonna be so disappointed with me because I don't live in their neighborhood. I don't live in the community. I live in Delaware. And sure enough, and, and I, and, and everybody got matched up. And then we, we set up video calls. So I had two video calls and the people I met were just so cool and so lovely. Again, it just, it just made me happy. And it was one of those things, and, and frankly, it got me thinking about matchmaking, that maybe we should be, well, it's not that I've, it's not that I haven't thought about it before. I think about it a lot. I think we should all be matchmakers. I think we as organizations should be matchmakers. I think we as individuals should be matchmakers because I think our best moments is when we're with other people, especially meeting new people and collaborating and coming together. So, so that's, that's why I, I created the Connector Street app. And the app, the app, if you have it on your phone with just a few clicks, you can introduce two people. And, and my thesis, my thesis is that we should be doing, if, my thesis is that if you have an app like that on your phone, you're gonna make more connections. You're gonna do more business. You're gonna bring more people together. You're gonna make more people happy. My mission, if you go on my website, it says to create a more interconnected world. That's, that's what I'm hoping for. People say, well, how are you gonna monetize that? Everybody, everybody, that's, that's everybody's first question to me. I don't know. I don't know. My goal is for people to make more connections. My goal is for us to be looking at the people we know and saying, who should we connect? Because it's kind of fun and it brings us joy. So, um, so that's, that's really the gist of it. The gist is, let's make more chance encounters. Let's make great connections for ourselves. And let's make great connections for the people in our lives that we care about. And I've got an app for that. And that's the end of my talk. I can't hear anybody.
Some are muted, some aren't.
Are you gonna talk about the app at all?
I can, I can. I, I, I will tell you, um, the app is, it's
It's free. There's no
It's free, yeah.
Andrea's not selling anything.
No, I, I really didn't want, it, it's in the Google Play Store and in the Apple Store. It's free. It's very, very easy to use. It, we don't, oh, when you make connections, if you want to connect to people, they don't have to be on the app. And, and it's really just, we don't, we don't take any information from you. It's, it's like the anti-Facebook, the anti-LinkedIn. Because you just put in a little bit of your information, use a picture and you put in your phone number, you put in your email. And, and then with just a few clicks, you, I can just show you what it looks like. With just a few clicks, you bring two people together. Sorry about that. That's mine. This is, this is what the home screen looks like. So it, it stores all the introductions you make and all the introductions you receive. And then if you, if you've sent an intro, an introduction to two people, you can very easily go back, look at that introduction, edit it and send it again to, to follow up and see, to see how they've gotten along. But it truly, it's very, very easy. I'm, I'm looking for ambassadors, people who want to try it out, make connections and tell other people about it. Because at this point, I've pushed it out into those stores, but I need, I'm looking for people to spread the word and, and, and sort of prove the thesis. When you have an app like that on your phone, you make more connections. And, and for Rotary Club or a chamber, I think it's, I think more connections, like I said, will redound back to the, to the organization. You know, only good things. Does anyone have any, any questions about my, my comments or about the app?
Yeah, Andrea, thank you so much for coming on today. So it was great to hear the presentation. I know, we have been talking about it for a while. One of the other reasons why I thought that this was such a good topic to go ahead and have and speak about in Rotary is because of exactly what it does, is it connects two people. One thing that I know is that there are a lot of people that don't want to put even a small effort to coming in to something like a one-hour meeting at Rotary. Because you're not only just meeting in like a group of people, it is everyone on an individual screen. And in some ways, it's scarier than actually going to, you know, the town hall to go into a meeting. So one way that I was looking at this as an opportunity for Rotary to grow is if anyone has someone, let's say, that may be closer to my age that you want to invite them to a meeting, but you're not really sure how to go about doing that and you don't know if they're actually gonna show up to the meeting. It's, hey, let me connect you with Jacob so that you can go ahead and talk to him and get his opinions on Rotary, what it's done to help him, the connections that he's made. And it's the ease of connection that I think is the value of this app. And that's just one way that I thought it could go ahead and benefit Rotary, because at that point, we're easily connected. I can reach out to them based on their contact information in the app. They can reach out to me because I already have the app downloaded and I have my connections in there. And then I can tell them how great I think Rotary is and, you know, how great someone is. And I, I love it. I love it. I look forward to using it.
Thanks, Jacob. You know, I would even, I, I think you're absolutely right. And, and I think frankly, what, you know, if somebody knew, if somebody, if one of the members knows someone that would be a good person for you to talk to, you could talk about Rotary, but you could just say, you know, I'd love you two to meet. I think, you know, there's, there's a member here who's terrific and I think, I think this is a good connection for you, without even saying it's about Rotary. You can say it's about, I mean, say, I'm in Rotary, he's in Rotary with me, but I think this is a great connection and I think you will both benefit because you know each other. I mean, to me, that's, that's really strong, you know, to, to make that kind of, you know, to make that, to deliver that kind of message. And you're right, the thing about, here's what I also learned from people who've used, that used this app is when, it's, it's almost like a new genre of introduction. It's almost like a postcard, like a digital postcard that, that is sort of a pressure kind of thing. Because sometimes when we send these long emails of making introductions, it feels like intense. Somebody spent a lot of time writing it, or it feels like it's too heavy, but you use an, you use an But you use an, you use an app and you just, you, you're giving, you know, especially if you use pictures to make the introduction, it's more like, here's someone I think you ought to know. He's a terrific person or she's a terrific person. I think this would be a great connection for you. He's in the community, blah, 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 blah. You know, and, and if you're someone that's trusted by the other person, which undoubtedly you are, they would listen to you.
And in these COVID times, you know, we don't have as many opportunities to hand out business cards because we're not seeing people in person. So it's, it's kinda like a way to, you know, connect to people, you know, maybe before you would give them each other's cards or give them your card and, you know, you don't have that opportunity now.
But here's what I would say, is if you have, if there are, if there are clients and customers, instead, it's a way of, of reinforcing your relationship with your clients and customers by making an introduction. Because you're doing something good for them. So, um, I was gonna just say something. Oh, the other thing about the app is that, you know, if you write a message, an intro message you like, you can save it into a, a custom library. So it's always there, you can reuse it again and again. And, and I'll say one other, I'm sorry, Laura, are you gonna say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, and, and you do get a choice when you, um, first go in to make the connection. You can make it a social connection, you can make it a business connection. What's the third choice?
Well, the third one is, is romantic. That's my wishful thinking, that's the inner matchmaker in me. I, I, but I, I, like, like I said, I, I, I think, if anybody's interested, I'd be happy to do a one-on-one tutorial. Like, I'll make time, I do that. I, I, I tutor people, um, fairly frequently. And I'm, I'm happy to do that if every, if anybody wants to, um, to look into this, look into this further. And if, like, to, um, if you'd like to receive the, the newsletter, um, I'm writing articles every week about connections and networking and, and introductions and sort of these types of, um, issues that, that touch us. And I'd be happy to put you on our, our list. You can let Julie know and she, she'll, she'll make sure I get, I get your information. Does anyone, um, does anyone have like a, a strong desire to start connecting the people in their lives? Have I inspired you? Some people? Maybe? One person, okay. Listen.
He likes to connect with everybody.
This is Robin? Well, that's great, that's great. You know, i- it is, you know, for some people like it, some people don't. But, but I just, like I said, I, I think we're missing something because we're alone. I mean, I'm, I'm in the fifth, third floor office and I, I can see the treetops in my neighborhood and the roofs. And, uh, I walk my dog and I do very little, I have very little other types of social interaction except this coffee I'm getting with this friend. This is probably the first coffee I'm getting in three weeks, like, that's it. I don't even do the food shopping. So I, I think, I think we, we need to try to find, find those, uh, social interactions and especially if we can make them a little fun and spontaneous.
Andrea, I did it, I got it, I got the, um, app.
Oh, you do? Okay.
It was very easy to sign up for.
Thanks, John.
And I, I even found an old picture of myself too.
Excellent.
I put that on it, so thank you.
Oh, it's, it's my pleasure. And if, if there are any other Rotary Clubs where you have relationships and you think, um, you think I'd be a good speaker for one of the other, your sister or brother Rotary Clubs out there, let me know. I'm always looking for speaking invitations.
Thank you, Andrea. Does anyone have, have any more questions for Andrea?
It was nice seeing you though.
Thanks, Laura. Should I stay on or should I, uh?
You're more than welcome to. Let's give Andrea a hand, you know what? We love having people with a lot of energy, uh, speak with us. You're a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thanks, you know what, I'm gonna, I can stay till about one. And how long does your meeting last?
Yep, we're, we're just till one o'clock.
Okay, I'll, I'll hang out with you guys. And then, yeah, then I gotta high tail it out of here.
Andrea, make sure you send me your address. Uh, we have a little gift we'd like to send out to you. It's just a little, it's a coffee mug with our, with our Rotary name on it.
And you know what, I love coffee mugs. I love, oop. I lost you, wait a minute.
No, I'm still here.
You're here, you know what, these, this is so bizarre, uh, you know, my daughter's trying to reach me, but I'm gonna decline.
Can you, uh, repeat the name of your app?
I put, I put it in the chat. Can you see the chat? And Julie.
At the bottom and it's also, uh, in the, uh, the agenda that was sent over to you. Connector Street app. If anyone has any questions, email me, I can forward your, your contact to Andrea or download the app and connect with Andrea. And, uh, again, we appreciate your time and, uh, and you were fun to talk to. And you're more than welcome to stay. We're just gonna go over a few announcements and that, and then we'll be on our way. But please send me your address, you got my email and, uh,
I will do that, yeah, absolutely.
Get this mug out to you.
Oh, I love it, I do, I'm, I'm a big, I collect mugs, so I'm, I'll be very happy to get, get one from, is it from the Rotary Club?
Yep, it's from our club, so. You got the Rotary emblem on it, you'll love it.
I know, I will, thank you.
All right, just a couple announcements. Uh, the big one is, we need some holiday gift cards. Uh, every year, around Thanksgiving and Christmas, we, uh, I give some cards out to a family that we select to, to receive them. So, um, uh, right now, they, we felt the easiest way to, uh, get the cards was to just drop them off here at Specialty Lubricants or my house, whichever is easiest for you. Um, if you drop them off, especially lubricants, we do the total social distancing here. So you can just stop into the breezeway, there's nobody there, there's a glass window, you can just give it to the secretary. And, uh, she knows where to, she knows where I am, so she'll make sure I get the cards. Um, and if for some reason you can't get out of the house, just drop me an email and I'll come and pick it up. So I'll make it as easy as possible, but we need some gift cards, uh, by November 17th. All right, so that gives us time to get them to the family before Thanksgiving.
Have the family, the families have been selected, is that what I understand?
They have not been selected yet. Uh, I believe we go through the schools for that, Joe. Well, Peggy's also, Peggy Spragens is gonna handle that. So, um, she'll advise where exactly where they're going.
Okay, I mean, that's, usually I, I coordinate that with our counselors. I saw your email and I wasn't sure cuz I haven't been in a meeting in a while.
Yep, uh, that's a, that's what was done in the past with, with the counselors to find out who in the school system is needed.
Okay.
So you can go ahead and lot, start launching that and, uh, then, um, we'll talk to Peggy and that. But, uh, I'll let you know how many cards we get by that time.
Great, thank you.
So, um, uh, next week, uh, we have another regular meeting, November 10th. And our own fellow, we're Terry and Latif Sappour is going to speak to us. So, uh, that should be fun. Let's support Latif and see what he has to say. Uh, November 20th, we have our next board meeting coming up at, at noon via Zoom. Uh, February 6th, we have our next reverse raffle, that's still on. So, uh, we're looking forward to that. And again, I've been telling, sometime this month, we're gonna be installing some more storefronts. So we'll keep you posted on that when we do a little work over there at, uh, um, at Rushwood at the Safety Town. Does anybody have some announcements that I may have missed? Hi, Paige. She's been hiding all sudden, she showed up there.
Hi, no, sorry. On Tuesdays, I have a meeting that, you know, I'm, so I start this from my iPad and I have to finish up something on my computer. And sometimes we just get a little chatty. So, you don't wanna hear what we have to say.
Thank you. Well, let's, uh, everyone join me in the four-way test. The four-way test of the things we think.
Things we think, say or do. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concern?
Third, will build goodwill and better friendships.
Or, or it will be beneficial to all concerned.
Thank you, everybody. With that being said, meeting is adjourned. Thanks for everyone joining us, get a bite to eat. Please go out and vote. Uh, that is very important to make your voice heard and I'll see everybody next week.
Bye-bye.
Thanks again.